So this February 6, 2019, meeting of the Oyster River School Board will come to order. Before we get started tonight, I'd just like to note the passing of Jim Catch. Jim is a longtime citizen of Durham, great athlete at the University of New Hampshire, a wonderful coach at ORYA. As you all know, there's two kinds of coaches for ORYA. There's coaches that are enthusiastic and positive but really don't know what they're doing. And there's coaches that are enthusiastic and positive and really know what they're doing. I was the first kind. Jim Catch was the second kind. He was a real force for helping youth sports in this area. He was also a member of the school board. He filled in, there was an opening, he filled in for, I think, a one-year opening, then was re-elected for a second term, and was instrumental in, for one thing, hiring Dr. Morris, which has certainly been an important thing for this board. Jim Catch was a gregarious, larger-than-life person. It was fun to be around him, and he'll be missed, so we send out our sympathy to his wife Nancy and son Sean and the rest of the family. So, the main part, the first part of this meeting, I don't know if there's any special thing I need to do, but we have a, moving forward with the strategic plan, several areas we want to talk about: technology, the new middle school facilities, school nutrition. So I don't know how we're going to get started.
I think the forum we used last time, I think, worked really well.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know that as we start tonight, we took all of the advice from the school board at the last meeting related to the academic sections on K-4 and 5'8" and 912, and the team met, and we made all the adjustments. I think one that was particularly important for us was actually Michael Williams' suggestion to change the outcomes into student-centered outcomes. And we did that, and we really changed the dynamic of the report. So thank you for that suggestion, Michael. The other one was to insert a master schedule review at the middle school, which we did. And then the last one spoke to your issue, Tom, about making sure we were clear in terms of what we were attempting to do with assessments. So we made those adjustments for the last meeting. We'll go through tonight's work, and whatever adjustments the board suggests we'll go forward with. Our goal would be to bring the adjusted strategic plan to the board in the second meeting of March, if we keep to our timeline that we have in front of us, so that the board would then have a corrected version and we can move forward with its adoption. So tonight, we have a couple of issues that we wanted to talk to you about before we got into Doris's strategic plan and Jim Rzicki's on facilities. And one is the high school technology plan, because that's only one and a half school years away. And Suzanne, do you want to open us up and talk about what you hope to achieve in the five years?
All right. So the five-year outcome, the overall goal is to have a one-to-one program for students with staff and resources in place that will allow students to fully utilize that one-to-one program and allow faculty to have integrated curriculum, blended curriculum technology. To do that, we need to do, within the first year, which would be next year, we need to do some basic infrastructure work and work with Josh, and also, and also look at our staffing needs and professional development for faculty. So that preparation piece would be within the first year. The second year would be the establishment of the one-to-one program. That's when the high school students would all receive the one-to-one with technology. And to continue to look at that infrastructure, to look at the use and the integration in the classroom, and how we're supporting faculty and students. That would continue over the next few years, that integration process. We've been, you know, watching Jay and what the middle school teachers have been doing and the technology integrator, what Nico's been doing at the middle school, and that will help us tremendously as we roll out our program. But we're really feeling like the five years, it will take us that five-year time to make sure that we not only have the staffing support, but also the infrastructure and the PD necessary to be able to have a fully blended program.
So given that, it's open to board questions, thoughts?
Well, I actually have one. So there's no technology integrator at the high school right now?
No, we do not have a technology integrator at the high school.
And so you anticipate, what is that, the fiscal '21 budget you put in the integrator position?
We'll need to put some type of position in, yeah. So I will, I will put some type of position in next year, for next year's budget for the school.
Can I ask you philosophically, how do we end up there? Because I think, didn't we start with the technology integration at the elementaries and then added the middle school?
We added the middle school first. And that proved the value. So what Jay did, probably three, maybe four school years ago, is he had a retirement, and rather than replace that retirement, he basically put the idea of a technology integrator on the table.
Wasn't that the library?
No, it was FCS.
Oh, that's right.
Yep. And so that gave us the legs to try this out and see if it was worthwhile. And then two school years ago, we went with the elementary schools, and that has been an amazing journey as well. These three tech integrators have made such a difference in our program. And so Suzanne has been, as she said, watching Jay and what's happening at the elementary school. And having someone to steer the technology work for the staff has made a huge difference to the middle school and elementary schools, and therefore, we feel we would want to be able to have that position at the high school as well.
What's, since the eighth grade now is one-to-one, and you're not going to be one-to-one for two, well, the year after next, correct?
Correct.
Is there, what's the plan now for the eighth graders that come up, freshman year?
So we've been having that conversation, we're actually speaking about that right now, how, you know, what we can do to support the kids as they, as they move to the high school, and are there students that would be better served having their technology? So that's a conversation that we're having with Dr. Morrison with the middle school.
Cell phones, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're pretty close, we're two-to-one, and we have, we've been, the integration has been much easier this year for faculty, I have to say. There isn't as much, I don't see as many emails as I have in the past of looking for laptops. Who has this cart and who has that cart, and moving carts around, and it's been much more seamless this year than it has in the past. So that's, that's been an enormous help for us. But we are looking at that, that's a conversation that we're having right now.
So if we end up having a recommendation for the board that's different, or an adjustment to Suzanne's timeline, Josh is part of that solution, and what we would do is rearrange his budget to accomplish that, if that's where we end up. So the big conversation is the fact that the current eighth grade all have one-to-one, and should we be considering a transition with the freshmen having them, and then the following year, sophomores, juniors, and seniors having them? So we haven't really come to a conclusion of that conversation, but what I predicted around October is, the closer we get to the end of the school year, the greater the pressure is going to mount to have the current eighth grade go into the high school with one-to-one. And so we've been having that conversation round and round. We still haven't concluded it, but we are definitely having it, Brian. And there would be a body of students who absolutely would have to have them going in because we depend on them for our special service population now. So it's, it's that debate that we're having internally. If we have a recommendation, we certainly will be coming to you guys.
A question, and it kind of occurred to me when we were talking about cell phones last year. Almost all students in the high school have their own cellphone. I mean, ninety, I think something, 90% of the eighth graders have cell phones. So you have like, kind of competing technologies. You have the one, the one machine we're going to be giving them, and you have the cellphone that they have. And I'm wondering if there's some kind of like a race or competition between these two that, you know, that if we're going to supply the one-to-one, it has to be as nimble and as effective as what they could bring in, or otherwise you're asking a student to use an inferior technology. But it seems that's a challenge to make the one that we offer as nimble and as effective as the one that they bring in, that they've been, that they may see more as their own. I'm just wondering if that, and this may be the role of the technologist, this may be the role of like having students have a place to make sure that one that we offer is as effective as it could be. But it seems to me there's this kind of competition that's going to happen. Am I missing something?
There may be, I mean, I think kids will use them in different ways. They're going to use their, their phones differently than they use their laptop or their tablet, whatever it is they end up having. I do think that that has a lot to do with the integration, it has to do with the professional development that we need to be offering faculty to make sure that there's blended learning occurring and that, that they can find appropriate and enriching ways that students can learn with that laptop. But I, I see your point, I understand completely what you're saying. I do think kids will use it differently, because a lot of kids have laptops already, and they, they use both of them.
You know, I literally went through this this week. My daughter lost her Samsung phone, which I just dug out of the snow today. But she was, you know, I can't survive without my cellphone. And I handed her like an iPad Mini, and I'm like, well, this does essentially everything that does, except call people. And the one limiting factor really was with the iPhone Mini, you use iMessenger, so it really only is connecting with other Apple devices to text, whereas, you know, her Samsung or my, your iPhone or whatever, you can text across to everybody. So I think that was kind of the limiting factor.
And I think too, when we're looking at different products and services that people are using, especially software, almost everything now is mobile-friendly. So you have a very similar experience if you're on a full-size computer versus a mobile device, whether it's a tablet or a phone. So students should be able to transition from a phone to a computer and back and forth, and their data should be all in sync, so.
Can I ask you, I mean, I know this is another equity issue, but for the kids that are going from eighth grade to freshman year, and of course, they're probably not going to want to do it for a year, but is there any way we could get like a group buy using like an educational discount on laptops for kids that wanted it?
Oh, yeah. You mean if they wanted to purchase it themselves?
Yeah. So in other words, while we're in this transition, we can say to parents, well, we are going to go in 2021 to laptop, but if you really need a laptop and, you know, this is an opportunity that, the alternative is we can do a group buy at this cost.
Yeah, most of the manufacturers already offer a student discount. Like with Apple, the discount that we get is almost the exact same thing that if you walk into a store, say you're an educator or a student, you're going to get the same thing. It's only when you buy in quantities of a thousand plus that they start talking about discounts beyond that. And Dell offers the same thing. I think even, well, the computer store's not there, but the computer store used to offer the same student discount to UNH students, to our students. So there are things that are out there that are available without having to organize anything. But some of the resellers we work with will set up school portals where we can pick a couple of different options, and parents can go in and pay with a credit card, that kind of thing. So we do have lots of options we can do for that.
And I do, you know, all the freshmen from Barrington won't have had that experience, you know what I mean? So I mean, while I'm sympathetic, I am sympathetic to those eighth graders that have really kind of gotten used to that. We do, will have, I believe, close to 50 students in the freshman class that won't be coming from that. So just to kind of keep that in mind too, I think.
Good point. Any other questions for Suzanne?
Well, I think, I think you started mentioning equity, but the same, a lot of the same issues, not all, but a lot of the same issues we discussed last year or two years ago with regards to the, how technologies used in the middle school would apply here as well in terms of everybody having access to the same suite of tools and not having access, or at least not having as ready of access on your, top of your desk, to the things you don't want to have access to in class. And I really hope we can work out a transition plan that provides some continuity for the eighth graders.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Any further thoughts on that one? Then we'll switch over to Jay. Jay, you, so you'll see the middle, the new middle school appears in Jay's section of the strategic plan, it also appears in Jim's section of the strategic plan. And the reason that happens is Jay's focused in on how to use the building to support academics, and Jim's is, how do we get this building built? And so one's structural and one's academic. So Jay, you want to pick it up from here?
Sure. I mean, I think a big kickoff was last night, and I look forward to, you know, working with Carrie and David and members of the community to really get the word out in terms of the needs, our current program needs and the impact, what we currently are in impacts learning for our teachers and, more importantly, our students. So I'm looking forward to really kind of get a PR machine working across the district, of course, working with Dr. Morris. We've already talked about doing some spaghetti dinners at the various elementary schools. You know, are there other community groups in Lee, Madbury, Durham that I can go out and speak to about some of the challenges that we currently have to gain support for this, you know, project?
I think the other thing I would add to that, Jay, is I started talking to the music staff today informally, because we have all the spring concerts, and a major piece of this new middle school is going to be, you know, a concert hall. So I think that, you know, if they would take on the messaging at each of their events, then that will keep that concept, you know, active. So I thought we could brainstorm out other activities that occur, whether they're athletic activities or academic activities, where we could, you know, bring this school front and center.
I just add, my, my staff are very excited because it's starting to become a reality that this really could happen. I know we need to get voter support next March, but it's sinking in, and they're excited.
Todd and I were at the middle school today for a different reason, and I can, and Todd went in one direction to do what he was up there for, and I went into another direction to do what I was there for. And it was like, almost every single teacher would stop and say, this is so exciting, this is now out in public, you know, this feels more tangible to us, it feels more real. You could feel it in the middle school today after last night's presentation.
I think a, a big challenge is going to be how to reach the greater community that does not have children in school. And so, you know, whether it's having some, like tie it in with a community dinner and a community forum, you know, but we, we really have to be mindful of that population that, you know, even now, I mean, the article in Foster's was fabulous, that's, I thought it was great, and so, you know, we, we need more of that type of PR as well. But just to, you know, have some kind of a forum where there can be questions and things like that and reaching out to.
So, you know, that strikes, you know, strikes a chord too, Denise, because we have all these events that happen in the three towns in the summertime, like Madbury Day and so forth, and we can, you know, set up a booth and be open to people coming by, because we'll get a lot of traffic there. And Lee, and Durham Day, we'll compete with the electric cars, but I think we can probably do that. And then Lee also has community events in the, in the summertime. So, you know, there's enough of us who live in the community that we can, you know, like Todd's and Lee, I'm in, you know, I'm in Madbury, Susan in Durham, you know, we can get lots of representation across the three towns during these summer events, and I think we can make, you know, we can, we can make a presence, Denise.
I just had one quick thing in terms of how I mentioned last night. You know, how can I bring community members that you're talking about, Denise, into the current middle school and show them?
Right.
Dr. Morris and I even spoke, you know, maybe we need to do some form of a spaghetti dinner at the middle school and invite people to come in, give them a tour for maybe five to six o'clock, and then feed them.
Right. It's a good idea, too.
Just make sure it's on a really hot day.
Yes.
We'll eat up on the third floor in the summertime.
I think the outreach of other events is a good idea. I would encourage you to keep it concise. I remember being at an elementary choral concert several years ago when we were working on getting support for the Fields project here at the high school, and feeling like we were being held hostage by the pitch.
Yeah, Suzanne and I experienced it. On the very first day that she was principal, we learned from that, Michael, not to do that ever again. It was terrible for her, and I felt so bad, so.
That said, the feedback on last night's presentation amongst the people that were there was very positive.
Yeah.
The staff are nervous. They're glad to be there.
Jay, you, in here, there's developing a school opening transition plan. What is that, what is a transition, but what do you, I mean, obviously never experienced anything like this, but what would you think a transition plan would kind of look like? Is, is it for the staff, for the students, is it for?
I think it'd be for everybody. You know, I've never done this before either, but I think it'd be working very closely with everyone in the district. I mean, from Doris, to make sure the kitchen's ready, to Jim, to make sure everything that we want to move from the current middle school over to the middle school, hopefully not much. You know, staff, students, what is, it's going to be a huge undertaking, but we need to make sure we have a solid plan, that that goes as smoothly as possible. Of course, the construction manager, architects, it's, we're going to need everybody involved for that transition plan.
And both the architect and the construction manager, their philosophy is to use the building as a learning tool. So part of the transition is to not try to hide the building from the kids as it's going up, but engage them in the process. Andre Bowen, our construction manager, is very big into exciting kids about the trades because, you know, there's a real shortfall, and, and he wants to bring kids onto the site and, and work with the teachers to get them excited about that kind of work.
I think that the robotics taking off too. I think a lot of kids go into engineering.
Yep.
Engineering's a big part of it too. I think it might enhance that as well, just so.
I have two students who've been meeting with me daily because they're doing a project for the robotics about the sustainability aspects of building a new school and what that would be for energy saving. So I already have students interested in that.
As you look through Jay's part of the strategic plan on the middle, new middle school, is there any suggestions the board has related to that plan?
I'm just wondering if the goals are actually a year off. You have, by June 2023, we'll occupy the new facility, and I think that's, I think we're hoping to be in by March or April of 2022.
Yep. Yeah, we should probably make an adjustment to that.
Good catch, Michael, thank you.
I think we revised that actually yes, or what, on Tuesday, Dr. Morris, when we met, we made some changes to that.
And same thing with the transition plan.
Right.
Back up a year.
Yeah, I had the same kind of question with the, the academic assessment program, which is, it's going to go to the architect by 2020. Aren't the plans already going to be done by 2020?
The, the plans will be done, largely done, well, that's not true either. The plans for the groundwork and the foundation and so forth will be done by the time we go to a vote in March. The additional plans for the structure will evolve during those three months that Andre's gearing up to do the world work. So it will, the plans will be done, done by the end of the 2020 school year, because at that point, Andre's heavily into building. So we'll catch that year. Thanks, Michael.
Well, and I would say, just, even though this is a five-year strategic plan, the goals don't all have to be by June 2024. That can end in June 2023, if that's the end of the transition.
Yep. And we did catch on a couple of those that you had suggested the last time and eliminated them, so you're, you got a good eye. Thank you. All right? All right. So Doris, you're up.
So this was actually a good exercise for me. We've never really had a strategic plan for child nutrition in my former district. And, you know, thinking about it, and one of the first things I said to Jim the first year I was here was, I've never had a program where they had a capital improvement plan for kitchens, kitchen equipment. And he said right away, you know, put one together and we'll talk about it, and, you know, that's what we started working on. As a rule, kitchens are pretty much, equipment is pretty much ignored until it falls apart and doesn't work, and then it's repaired and repaired and repaired until it's irreparable, and then you buy something new. So, you know, sometimes they'd be, we, we have done some work on that, but we still have a long way to go because there's a lot of equipment in there, and there's some things that now that our participation has grown, we really need to increase what we have for All the schools were doing probably 30% participation at most when I came here in 2012. And I just ran the meals per worker hour today to see what I had for labor, and it was really exciting to see that middle school is doing the equivalent of 611 meals per day, which is about 100 more meals than they actually have labor, labor for. So that was pretty exciting. High school is doing about 70 more meals than they, and they're in the 600s as well than they actually have labor for. And both elementary schools are right about what they have, what they should have for meals per worker hour. And that's a national standard formula that we use. And elementary school, it's almost impossible usually to hit that because, and especially in a low free-reduced district. So they've come a long way, they're cooking a lot more food. Both elementary schools were doing about 70 meals per day, and now they're over 200 for lunches, plus all the breakfast and the snacks. So it's pretty exciting. But again, we have to make sure that they have the tools they need to do the job, and I feel very strongly about that. Staff training, our staff is, they're, they're kitchen people, they're not medical staff. But we're getting more and more students' special needs and allergies, and, you know, they have to know at a moment's notice what that child can and can't have and how to handle that. So that's why that's first on my list. Again, local food, it's very different from what some of these people did in years past, and they've, they've gotten better and better at it, but we know we can always learn. Bringing in chefs that can teach them different things, how to grow herbs. We have gardens at our schools that are bringing them herbs, and they're like, what do we do with these? Because they're used to the shaker, you know, the Mrs. Dash. So it's good to have that kind of input from chefs who really know what they're doing and can really teach them different ways of doing things. Al asked me about commodity foods, those are the government commodities. We actually get about 24, 25 cents worth of commodities for every meal that we served last year. And commodities used to be pretty scary, but they're actually really good now, they're improved. We have DOD Fresh, which is Department of Defense, but we can order fresh produce every week. I can allocate as many of my commodity dollars to that so that I can order fresh produce rather than just get ground-box foods, and it's really improved. I'm actually on the state council for commodity foods, so I have some input into what types of things we want to see or what we don't want to see, and it's really helpful. But staff needs sometimes training on, you know, what do we do with this? We've got, got a lot of this, and we have this meal, but what else? You know, how do you prepare this in the best possible way? So that's exciting for them. They love it when chefs come in and people come in and show them new ways of doing things. And then our kitchen designs, I think that, you know, kitchens were like, well, here's a spot, here's a room, we'll put a stove in there and a sink, and, you know, but when you start doing large numbers, like at the Mohermit, we had such a tight workspace in there that when we then broke through the, broke through the wall and the kids no longer come into the cafeteria, that made it a safer workplace.
Into the kitchen? You said cafeteria, into the kitchen?
Oh, I'm sorry, into the kitchen. They used to go into the kitchen to get their lunch, and now they get it through a window. And we really need to do that at Massway as well, because that's what they're doing there. And, and it, right now, when they're taking something out of the oven, they're backing into a table, pretty much, when you take a big sheet pan. So with three people in that kitchen, it can be a dangerous place for my staff. So we really need to try to move towards making that safer and just more efficient. And hopefully, Massway and then the high school, high school, 600 meals, that's, that's a lot, and two lunches. Hopefully, we can do some type of redesign there to make it more efficient. We really have a bottleneck right now and a really long line, which they serve us pretty quickly, but, but, you know, there's always downtown, so we, we want them not to go that way. Do you have questions? Oh, did you want me to talk about history?
No, just, you know, I think you did a great job in presenting what you're attempting to do in the five years, Doris, to just let the board have their, their time with you and ask clarifying questions.
I think you and your team have done a fantastic job diversifying the offerings and involving the community over the last few years, and that's, so we're starting from a, a much better place than we would have been otherwise. And I think this is, this is really solid. I'm wondering if there's, kind of in that, in that context of partnerships with other sources of local foods, are there other things that you would like to pursue in that realm that should be part of this as well?
Always looking for partnerships with local foods. The difficult thing is Always looking for partnerships with local foods. The difficult thing is when you get those, you don't always know, you know, when we order our own produce, we order for our menu. But for instance, we made this partnership with UNH. And it's been great for the most part, but we basically said that we could buy whatever they grew for us. And, and we do, and we use it all. But sometimes, like, you know, I've had staff say, what are we going to do with all this botchoi, you know, things like that. But they're finding ways. And great soups.
Which I would add, Michael, that Doris has been looking for other partners. And she'll come in and report to Sue or to me that, you know, I think I've got one. And then it'll kind of, you know, go away. But so she's very, very assertive in trying to find alternative partners for fresh food. But it's, sometimes they are very fixated on the retail market. And, and so when Doris tries to say, but, you know, we're right here, they say, no, they still want to do the retail market. So she does try a lot.
Just one thing that we did recently about grow racks and purchasing grow racks, one for each elementary school. And those, they will be planting those, the students will be planting them next week on the 12th. So there's supposed to be a 21-day from planting to harvest. And then each growing cycle, a new class will step in.
Cool.
So all the students will get to do that. It'll be housed in the cafeteria in each elementary school. And we're pretty excited about that. So that will take a little bit of the place of the UNH greenhouse because we are losing that at the end of this year. So that's exciting.
What's the cafeteria plan for Massway? Because it has in here like a construction of Massway Kitchen and Cafeteria.
So what I need to do is to get, move the line, break through the wall so that we can actually serve the students through a window.
It's just changing the, is it expanding the cafeteria itself, or?
No.
No, but it's giving the cooks, it's giving the cooks more elbow room. We actually talked about the expansion of the cafeteria, but then the student population is settled. So we don't feel that pressure anymore because we thought it was, you know, going to be past 400. And it hasn't achieved that. So the size of the cafeteria is okay. But really what Doris is talking about is how to reconfigure her serving kitchen so that it'd be more efficient.
Just safer. And really, the students shouldn't be in the kitchen, you know, because skills happen and things like that happen. I think it's safer if they're served through a window. The other thing about local is Friday, we get our, our milk dispensers. And next Wednesday, we'll be getting local milk at both high school and middle school.
Cool.
Local milk.
Yes.
That's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Homogenized and passionized.
Yeah. So that'll be new, new. Anything else for Doris, guys? All right. Thank you. All right, Jim, front and center.
Thank you very much. I just want to start by saying thank you, Jay and your staff yesterday for giving an accurate picture of the middle school, not only academically, but just some of the challenges that we face every day. I know that a big topic along with the middle school is obviously the cost. But just for a brief second, I just want to really go into a little bit more about what facilities expects during the construction and the whole process of middle school. From actually last year up until when we anticipated being open in 2022, I have that as the danger zone for facilities because it's going to be really hard to make a decision because something's going to break big during that time. And that's, it's a tough call to be like, are we going to repair it? Are we going to Band-Aid it? Are we going to, what are we going to do to limp along until the building is complete? So we're always, we're always kind of alert on that. And it's going to be a lot of unknowns. But, you know, we want to be prepared for that as well. Also, just some things on the facility side, it's like we're still responsible for snow removal there. The layout is going to change, depending if that is still built on site and plans are, are going along that area that we all talked about. So as much as we talk about as well as being a learning environment for students, we also want it to be a learning environment as it goes, time goes through for both of our maintenance technicians, myself, custodians and our ground staff. I want them to be pretty active in the construction process going through the building. Because if we're talking about a building this sophisticated, there's a lot of knowledge that we're going to need to learn and absorb in order to maintain that for years to come. So fortunately, I have a staff that's not in, not looking to retire in the next five or 10 years. So I think, and it's going to be a growth process for me as well. I feel very fortunate just picking or having been involved in the process and everybody selecting Bowen Construction. When you start to work with a company on a project this size and don't know, you know, just some of the integrity of the firm and, and the people that are going to be boots on the ground every day and how they tick, we have a great advantage there. And I'm very fortunate to already know them. We've already talked, have each other's cell phones and are able to pancake things. And I, just like I was in other bigger projects with Massway and the Mohermit project, I always seem to be the liaison with the principal and, and everybody else. So I intend to probably start renting an apartment in Durham somewhere to get a little more closer. So that's a little bit more from the facility side about the middle school. Before I go into some of the other stuff, is it okay to park here and field some questions?
Sure. Board have questions about the preparation that Jim has to go through to be ready for the new middle school.
Okay. I'll take that as a no, or not yet. What I have in here, security is always a big topic here. And probably the biggest expenditure out of the five-year plan is going to be exactly what we're doing this upcoming summer to the front of Mohermit. We always want to add a different, additional security cameras. This, I believe in the following year, we want to start focusing on our auxiliary buildings, which is the SAU and our service building. Kind of nervous about the SAU and how vulnerable it is right now. I think it should really deserve its own spot as being carefully considered to make some enhancements. And also, as we get through the five years, there's certain pieces in technology and trends now with door codes to individual classrooms, how do we make the internal a little bit more secure? So I'm excited to look at that through the next five years. Any questions about security? Follow, next one is, as you would hear yesterday, a lot of heating and cooling concerns. One of the big, one of the big things that I really would love to attack is district-wide standard of farthest temperature. Over the course of the year, we can make adjustments on staff and student needs. I'm not saying they're not legit. Some people are colder than others, some people are warmer than others. And we intend to make somebody have a little bit better day by making adjustments and sometimes fail to go back and make changes. And so at the end of the year, we can kind of have this mix of different rooms that are really hot or really cold, based upon the teacher's liking. And I kind of want to standardize all that and say with confidence to teachers as we look at addressing heating or cooling concerns is, no, our, our temperature standard is 72. That's what we want to get to. So something like that, I would like to really address in a policy format possibly and certainly work with the admin team. A big technical need that, or mechanical need we have is about when the high school was, was just finished being rebuilt. And it seemed like it happened around the same time. There was a big push to put air conditioners and technology server closets. 15 years is how old they are right now. And if we don't start replacing those soon, technology is a pretty big thing here. We want things to work. And I don't want to be on the hook for damaged servers or technology not working properly since it's so integrated in the classroom. So there's going to be a big push in the strategic plan to take care of that. And then we start to attack a lot of the specific classrooms, both at Massway, Mohermit and the high school, as, as far as getting more cooling into those spaces.
How do you do that? I mean, is that adding, it goes through ductwork, right? Or, I mean?
It does. And you know what? The answer may be just portable window units or portable stand-up units or some of the new ductless split systems are, you can now tie four or five classrooms into, from one condenser. So the technology is really getting efficient. And we use that same technology over at Massway. So we actually only have one condenser that's cooling those four classrooms and it's able to keep up. Well, we haven't officially been through a summary yet here. But if engineers are saying that that's going to be able to handle that, it gives us hope. The more cost is if we want to add cooling into an air handler, especially the third floor here and the big tower area, it would mean insulating all the ductwork on the inside, which that cost is just ginormous. So it's not just simple as putting a air conditioner coil inside of an air handler just to get cooling. It's much more than that. And insulation of the ducts so we don't have water condensation throwing inside the classroom. So it's, it's my partnership with an engineer to look at building specific things. So.
So the, the system installed at Massway is heating and air conditioning?
It is, yes.
Is there a backup heat source?
No.
Cheering.
Well, actually, no, let, let me back up on that. The, the cooling system is heat pump technology. So it can go in reverse to provide heating as well. But the main source of heat for the new additional over at Massway, both front and back, is the exact same system that we use here. Boiler heats up a coil and each room has its own fan, what we call the VAV, variable air volume heater.
Okay. And in terms of the technology, the, the technology classes right now, do they have remote temperature monitoring or alarm?
Yes. Yeah, Jim can, Jim can monitor every classroom in the district. So if Suzanne says the third floor is at 89 degrees, he can turn on the fans and try to get some cooling
I'm thinking specifically of rooms that have server gear or other related equipment in them.
Yeah, he can see all the servers.
Well, actually, no, I can't. I can't from our, our automation system for cooling. The way that I get that information is actually on the servers itself. It has a temperature which John and the other IT folk log in and actually get a server temperature reading.
Depending on which location, like the core system in the service building, we have a thermostat that can alert us. We have a temperature probe that's in the stack. And then we have a part of the security system has a remote temperature probe. So if it reaches a certain threshold, then they call Jim or Daryl. And then we get floods of emails. We have them set up to email. We have them set up to text message.
Even hotter.
When the AC goes off in the service building, we get up to 120 in about an hour.
Wow.
Because it's literally a rack, almost as tall as I am, and it's pumping out a lot of, a lot of heat. So if we get any alerts, there's, there, you know, Alexander lives locally. And a couple of us will just rush in and get fans out and try to address the problem. But, but yeah, every server closet, we at least have a, at least one temperature probe in the rack. And in the real critical ones, we try to have more than one.
So where I'm, where I'm going is if, if replacing the systems there is two years out, you're satisfied that you have enough?
We, we've done a good job. We just upgraded, the temperature units actually connect in through the battery backups. There's a card and we just upgraded those this year across the district. So all of that has been updated. The issue becomes if there's, you know, another failure elsewhere, like the internet goes out. So, so we do try to have a couple of different ways. So luckily, the buildings haven't been issues. It's mostly been the service building. And that's really, we've tried to consolidate everything down there anyway. Most of the buildings is just, just network gear, not critical infrastructure. So, but we do have some plans in place. If the service building were to go down, we can essentially spin up all critical servers at another location and then budgeting money to be able to even spin up stuff in a different geolocation and connect it remotely. Mostly payroll in case like if we had a nice storm and the whole area was down.
Right, right.
So we have lots of layers. So.
I had a question. It's kind of a budgetary question because my sense of the plan going forward is that once we have the bond passed, we're going to drop the facilities budget so that, and then use the savings to offset the cost of the bond. That's the plan. I'm just wondering how these, because it seems to be some ambitious projects. Are you going to have the Siemens, you know, continue, you know, continue to pay off the Siemens work? You know, can, can we do this and still lower the, lower the facilities budget so that we can accomplish the offsetting of the bond?
That's a good question. I would say yes. Even though it is ambitious when we look at the bigger stuff, especially in years 24, 25, when we sink almost all of our money into both a bond payment and, and the lease that was already existing. I think there may be opportunity within our normal operating budget to do an AC unit or two, which I wouldn't say it's inexpensive. But if we just focused on one with end of the year funding, I'm anticipating doing it that. I'm also anticipating energy savings as we get into the following budget years. And also remember that this is the last year of our existing Siemens lease, which is going to open up another $70,000 in, in next year, in the following years to help offset some of this stuff. So it's, it's almost like, I think we're kind of over the hump of really proportioning larger sums of money for bigger capital projects, which is over $500,000 just to complete a project. So each one of these, even some smaller AC projects, I'm able to get by that year with just 50 grand to do a pretty substantial amount of work.
So as far as getting back to the temperature and the standards, which certainly makes sense, is there, are there mechanisms currently to like lower temperature in the, at night and that sort of thing? Does that?
There is, yes. And that's a part of our automation system. That's what we have Siemens commission on a yearly basis for. They, they basically come over the summer and make sure all of the, all the equipment is working as it should, but also reset, resets everything. It's actually us, meaning me and my staff, and a mechanical failure that may happen in a specific space where adjustments are made after that. And, you know, to be honest, sometimes it could be, I'm just, I didn't go back in and change it or it wasn't released or another event happened that we need to keep that running as it wouldn't, wouldn't normally, just to continue dissecting the issue. But on a normal basis, all those schools, they, they drop down to 60 degrees at night for a temperature setback. So we can still obtain energy savings.
We kind of jumped in on, I kind of jumped in on questions before you talked about the last two rows. Did you want to cover those? You don't just keep asking questions?
Let's, why don't we move to last two rows? Or do you have a question?
It's, it's general, so.
Okay, let's move to the next row if that's, if people have questions.
And I'll be brief. I know we're running short on time.
We're okay, we're okay.
Our, our parking lot, the tennis court was a big, a big deal that we talked about even in years past. We still want to make sure that goes forward. And I think it's essential. I have that in the strategic plan. Just in some recent talks with even the Department of Public Works, I'm not sure the legality is yet of it, but the town does have, recognize some benefit in that as well. And I'm not saying they're going to give us any money for it. But if we were to go out to bid for like the hot top or the pavement at the same time the town did, we may be able to join forces and go to a pavement contractor and say, we need X amount of miles of pavement and be involved and somehow that bid together, even though we're paying separately to drive that price down even more. I was pretty excited about it because usually our pavement is based on square foot, not mile, as a town does, which, which could give us greater savings. And then finally, if anybody's been to Mohermit or Massway at night, we are in dire need of some parking lot lighting. And it's not only a, a safety thing, but I think an aesthetics thing. And just, I think it's really key at, at those buildings. Then finally, the auditorium expansion for the high school. We talked about this. It hasn't been a serious consideration. It, well, it is serious to us that we need more space in our auditorium. But we felt that it warranted a spot on the strategic plan and probably is going to get a little bit more discussion, probably as this group talks about on the middle school. Do we focus all efforts on that, getting a bigger auditorium space? If that is a section that may be considered in the plan? Or do we seriously and aggressively put money towards an architect or designer to engineer something at our current site? Steve Blatt already did say there may be a possibility here to do something and add a couple more rows. I can't visually see it, but that's going to be a discussion. That's why we put it in the middle of the strategic. That's why we put it in the middle of the strategic plan. So I think we're all off the hook for another two years. Well, unless we talk about now with the, with the middle school.
Yeah, that's the only area that I have concerns about. I just feel particularly with the middle school and the bond, that that is just, I think, particularly if we're talking about having an auditorium at the middle school in terms of a sell to the community, you know, we're going to build another auditorium at the middle school, but we're also talking about expanding the high school. I'm really nervous about that. So I, particularly the five-year outcome of will be increased. I, I feel like that's too ambitious to say that. I don't have an issue of staying with like the exploring and, and sort of putting it in that way. But to say that, you know, to put it in our plan that the high school will be increased, I'm not comfortable with that because of, like I say, with the middle school. You know, maybe, maybe instead of saying, if you're talking about, you're not really sure yet in terms of what the middle school and the high school will look like, you know, maybe just say auditorium space, you know, and have a goal in terms of total auditorium space or something like that. But it does make me nervous to have a goal that says that we're going to expand the high school auditorium.
Do we have a sense of how much auditorium space we need?
Yeah. Well, if Suzanne was answering this question, she'd say eight hundred and twenty-five plus a hundred adults. Because what happens is when she's doing meetings at the high school, she can only do two classes at a time. And so this particular expansion was a very cost-effective expansion where we would take the interior stairwell and put it to the outside of the building and that would have added a hundred and twenty-five seats to the auditorium. So it wasn't like we were going to blow out, blow out the wall and add three hundred seats. It was literally pushing the stairwell out because the stairwell in that auditorium is in the back at the top and it's chewing up valuable real estate. And if it was, if we just expanded the, the wall out and put the stairwell on the other side of the wall, we'd be able to pick up a hundred and twenty-five seats.
Do you have a sense of cost for doing something like that?
We had at one point, Denise, that number in our head, but we'll get that number to you. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a million dollars. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars, as I recall, but that number is, we'll get it to you so you can know on that. So, yeah, we were, we weren't thinking this was a huge, was, one, there isn't the real estate literally at the back end of the high school to do much because you go right into that parking lot that's behind there. So if you, if you can visualize, if we move the stairwell to the exterior of the building and where that sidewalk is right behind the building, that's about how deep. And so it is a reasonable idea, but we can get you the numbers at the next meeting, the estimate for that and, or in the March meeting, and then you guys can decide whether it's a priority or not. But I don't disagree with what you're saying in terms of, we don't want to create the impression that we're competing with, with the middle school because we couldn't create a thousand-seat auditorium in, in the high school. There just is not enough space in, in that parking lot to do that. And so the only way we're going to get a thousand-seat auditoriums is with the new middle school from the ground up.
I know that you updated the capital plan as part of the budget process last year. And so hopefully this isn't a very easy request, but if you could take another cut in, in this context before we look at this again?
Sure.
Just so we have that matching.
Yep, for sure.
The auditorium expansion, this project was not included in the capital plan. And much to time's point, this is the wild card budgetary.
Well, and I think, I think some of these probably are less impactful than they might feel at first, and that might make it easier to make a positive decision.
Yep.
One more thing about auditorium. It was nice to see that Keen had the same problem that we did and how they did their auditorium at their middle school was, was quite ingenious and.
With the storage space underneath.
With the storage space underneath.
So in our, in our current auditorium, because of the stairwell effect, there is no storage underneath all of those seats. But what Jim's referring to is when we visited Keen, the seats were, you know, suspended in steel. And so you could walk underneath those seats and they used, used it as a storage area for the entire school. And they had literally paint codes as to who owned what section to store. So English departments, you know, music departments, and, and the maintenance department, everybody owned a space. Because that's a massive, if you think about it, if you have a thousand-seat auditorium and it's suspended in a steel superstructure, it's a massive area for storage. And, you know, if, if every principal was talking tonight, the one thing that they would all say is there's never enough storage.
Right, right.
And it's no different than our own houses because there's never enough storage in our own houses. So if you can build in that kind of storage, it's, it's nothing short of a miracle in a school.
Other questions?
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you tonight for your help.
Right along. Get it going?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need to have a motion to approve the agenda. I have no changes. So could I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Michael, second, but Brian?
I'll second. Oh, sorry, did we have a second?
Brad, you're slow.
A second, second.
Second, second. Second, second, but Dan. All in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment? No public. Approval of the minutes from January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Denise?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. I have one change. It would be on page three. And I've given, Sue, you have, okay, I'll read it. Tom Newkirk raised concerns about implementing, quote, "common exam," about implementing common.
Where is this? Page three?
Tom, Tom Newkirk, I'll read it correctly. Tom Newkirk raised concerns about whether implementing common exams would undoubtedly restrict teachers and promote standardization. The Minister agreed to review the language in light of this concern. I think that captures what I said.
It's not on page three of the regular meeting minutes.
Well, it's like, it's like after Michael, like Michael wanted to.
No, that's, that's got to be in, is that in the? Where is that?
Well, it's like this, there's a quote on page three, Michael makes a comment. Michael wants to look at whether students are getting out of this at year five. And I wanted, it could either go before then or after then.
You're making an addition.
What?
You're making an addition?
Addition, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're trying to figure out where you're changing something.
No, I'm just, I'm adding, I'm adding.
Oh, you want to add it to page three. Oh, got it. Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that. Okay. So other changes to the minutes?
Yeah.
Denise?
So at the very bottom, when we go into the non-public.
What page, Denise?
At the, the last page, which would be page seven. So on page seven, it talks about how we went into non-public, then we returned to public, then we went into non-meeting, and then we returned to public, but then we actually went into another non-public. So I've already given Sue the details as far as the time of when we went back into that non-public, when we came back out, and when we finally adjourn. So that just needs to be added in there.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time to make sure Sue has the corrections because Laura couldn't be here tonight. So it's, it's very helpful.
Okay, with those changes, ready to vote? All of us in favor, raise your hands. Six in favor, the minutes are approved with those changes. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Were we including the non-public minutes in that?
I'm sorry.
That's right, we have to approve.
Yeah. I'll move to approve both the, there are two sets of non-public meeting minutes. I will move to approve both.
Moved by Michael, is her second?
Oh, second.
Second by Denise. Changes? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the non-public minutes approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
I would just like to congratulate, publicly congratulate the girls' indoor track program. They are the Division Two state champions and we're really quite proud of them. And I know they're proud of their accomplishments as well. And our boys' indoor track finished third.
Jerry Shire, principal of the middle school, three really cool things have happened recently. One, we hosted our first robotics competition a couple Sundays ago. We had close to thirty teams from across the state participate. I get to attend all several hours. It's amazing what these kids do and the problem solving they're involved in. We had the first-place team and we have several teams who were going to go on to the state competition in a couple weeks. So our program has greatly grown. Secondly, our math counts team competed just this past weekend. I believe it was right over here, UNH or Phillips Exeter. And our school team came in first place, so that's very exciting. So they're going to go on to the state competition. And lastly, we've had over twenty students recognized for their exceptional writing for the Scholastic Writing Awards. And those kids will get recognized at Plymouth State in May. We had nine gold key winners who go on to actually, the, to get recognized potentially nationally. And Linda Reeve and Kim Donovan, my two eighth-grade ELA teachers, are actually working on a press release. Even, they were doing that today. So you'll get to see that hopefully in the news very soon. So exciting news. Thank you.
From the board?
Yep.
Denise?
So I want to thank Karina Delcino, the school counselor at Mohermit, for facilitating conversation around The Self-Driven Child. It's a book. And we had some great conversation with the various community members and parents that attended about children as far as, you know, what is too much independence, not enough independence? So it was a great evening. And then I attended the fifth grade concert that featured the orchestra, the band, and the chorus. And that was great. And I, it's just amazing to see our music program just continue to grow and grow. So, I mean, I do hear the need for the space. And then finally, just with the weather, it seems like every storm hits at three AM. And I know tomorrow morning is going to be another one of those mornings. And I know when I had talked to Todd, we were up to twenty hours that we've lost, plus two more. So now we're up to twenty-two. And just wondering in terms of when decisions might be made as far as the Professional Development Day and, you know, that sort of thing. So maybe that can be, you know, a discussion for, you know, be brought to the board for the next meeting perhaps or something.
Others? Brad?
Went last Friday night to the boys' varsity basketball game where they played Kingswood and came this close to scoring a hundred points, which you rarely see in high school. But they put on an incredible show, plus it was Coach Lucas's recognition of his milestone wins. I believe it was two, two hundred, right? Yeah. Big banner, everything. So, but needless to say, the basketball team is again on a really good path this year. And I'm looking forward to seeing them hopefully play at UNH again at the end of the year. That's my goal.
Great, great. I had a quick one. So I know we spent like the last two meetings, the beginning, talking about the strategic plan, going through each of the pieces of them, and we videoed tonight. But after we get done with the budget and we get into the spring and things calm down, I think we should have a conversation about how we can effectively communicate with the public what we're trying to accomplish in the academic part of the strategic plan. I know we've, it's a, it's a thing we've talked about over and over again, but still there's a sizable amount of people who do not have a good understanding about what we're trying to achieve. Beyond press releases and that, I think we need to be a little bit more innovative how we use things like YouTube and social media in small snippets, almost like TED Talks, where we begin to talk about what we're trying to achieve academically and put that on the website. And that, that gives people an opportunity who are not going to sit and just watch the last forty-five minute discussion of the strategic, strategic plan, to take it in digestible bites and we can begin to lead them through about what we're trying to accomplish. Because, you know, I, what I want to get beyond is particularly with the competency area, there's a lot of pent-up anxiety where people just don't understand it. Before we get to a point where it explodes, it would be better if we can really lead people along to understand what we're doing.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, we, we spoke the last time Ron Lamar was here about what we think the middle school project is going to cost. And he and Andre both gave some good explanation of why the previous comparables that they gave us were not reflective of what we expect here. I would still feel a lot better if I had some objective evidence of comparables that did reflect what we expect here to kind of feel like we're really in the, in the right ballpark there. In particular, if there were a similar, even if they're not exactly a middle school building, similar recent buildings that Ron's firm has done would be helpful. There is, I don't know, Tom, if this was going to be part of the delegate assembly later on, but there is a bill, House Bill six seventy-seven this year related to discipline, expulsions, and suspensions. And the New Hampshire School Boards Association has taken a position against this bill. And I think we should take a look, I would like us to take a look and see if we would agree with that position at some point in the future and comment to our legislators if, if we disagree with the association. Two more quick things. The treasurer's report. I know that that's a, a legal thing, that the treasurer's report has to be presented to the board. The content in there is not particularly useful to me, but I think one thing that would be is to see additionally the cash balance and the sweep account because that would give us a better idea of, of short-term financial stability coupled with the overall budget picture. And what we get right now is only, it's such a small piece of the picture that it's really, I think, not useful to me. And finally, Jim, I hope at some point, maybe in your part, you can comment on where we are at in the outreach to the emergency management leaders in the district to.
I will do that. I will put it right down there.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. Brad has talked about the basketball team being in a great trajectory. Certainly the girls' hockey team are probably playing at this moment undefeated, you know, it's fantastic. It's like Patty's not here tonight. Maybe stating the obvious that, so proud of the middle school teacher's presentation last night. I'd kind of heard some of these things, you know, in our meetings, but I think hearing it from them, I think, was really insightful. Because I've attended a lot of meetings about the middle school, but I thought it was really insightful, just the difficulties, the barriers of that building places for instruction. I thought that was really well laid out. And thirdly, I was a judge at the Poetry Out Loud contests. Congratulations to Alana Irving, who won the contest, and to Celeste Haynes, who was the runner-up. And Alana will go on to the next level of the competition. So she's fantastic. Who else? Nope, okay. Assistant superintendent?
I guess mention a couple of things on the calendar. Denise, as you brought it up, yeah, we are, we have twenty-two hours of lost instructional time at this point. Remember, we have, we do have five days built in, which is the equivalent of thirty hours that's built in on the end of the calendar. Typically, we wait until March because right now, I'd love to say twenty-two is all we're going to be impacted by, but I think that number, we don't, we don't know what it's going to be. So typically, we wait till March. And Suzanne also reminds me that around that time, we also suggest what the graduation date is going to be. And at that point, we ask you to kind of finalize what that calendar is going to look like. Because the date we choose for graduation is, is kind of key to what the last day of school will be. So that's sort of the timeline we've typically used, but I'm glad to talk about it at any time that you'd like to discuss it earlier. I did want to just make one quick announcement. The sabbatical committee is doing our work. I did want to let you know, we, we have, we had five applicants. We have three that we are bringing back to do more comprehensive presentations to the committee before we make our final decisions. As you can imagine, with all the snow days and, and changes in schedules, we've, getting a group of ten people together to have these committee meetings has been a little challenging. But there is a timeline factor that we need to be aware of. By the contract, by February fifteenth, we need to notify the board of what the recommendations are of the committee. Now, there is not another board meeting until February twentieth, but I will have a memo that will be in the backup for the February twentieth meeting, which you will have prior to February fifteenth, which is the Friday before that board meeting, that will alert you to what the recommendations are of the committee. And then obviously, at the February twentieth board meeting, we, I will present to you the. Now, there is not another board meeting until February twentieth, but I will have a memo that will be in the backup for the February twentieth meeting, which you will have prior to February fifteenth, which is the Friday before that board meeting, that will alert you to what the recommendations are of the committee. And then obviously, at the February twentieth board meeting, we, I will present to you the, those recommendations, and you can either act on them then, or you can wait until, we have to notify candidates by March fifteenth. So you can, you'll have time from that point to decide how you want to proceed. I would tell you, we have some great Sabbatical Proposals, and we're, and I think we're going to have some really exciting recommendations for you. Thanks.
Boris?
Just as a matter of information, because the board has asked me to do this without bringing it through for your approval, we do have a request for an overnight trip by Sean Kelly, the English Department, to New York City, Columbia University, for the Student Journalism Conference. He anticipates twelve students coming, and he and one other chaperone will bring the kids down. So, that's just a update from that. Then, the Friends of the Performing Arts at Oyster River was an organization in, that was established in the nineties. And we got a letter from Gail Kelly and a phone call to Sue Caswell, that they want to close out the account and donate $300 for the music education programs at Mohermit, Massway, and Oyster River Middle School. They deliberately left out the high school, because during the time that the group was active, they felt like that they had contributed a lot more to the high school than the elementaries and the middle school. So, just want to thank Gail Kelly for thinking of our school system, and especially for thinking of our music program, the elementaries and the middle school. So, I thought that was pretty nice, nice little surprise. The architect will be here to do his monthly report to the board on the twentieth. And I'll make sure that, Michael, he gets those latest thoughts that you have in terms of comparables. And I did, you know, want to point out just very, very briefly, we had this last night, and I'm going to hold them, so I'm going to get up for a second. If you don't mind, so I don't put it right in your face. One of the big questions we had is, oh, can you see? Okay. What, how the property in relation to the current middle school exists? So, we had Ron Lamar do a ghost image of the current middle school, so you could see the footprint and where it lands, and get a sense of where fields could be, where parking could be, and so forth. And again, this goes back to the conversation that Tom and Michael brought forward as to the viability of maintaining that gym in multi-purpose room area. And you can see, it would really land right into the edge of the one field that we'd be able to create. So, I thought this was a good visual image of the property. Next time that Ron comes, he plans on bringing a three-D modeling of the property, so he can show you visually the assets of the property and what he has to work around. So, I thought this blocking of the middle school begins to give you a sense of space. And once the budget passes, he'll be doing additional borings in relation to the property in terms of ledge, but also in terms of possible sites for heating, so.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
And he would like direction from the board. I mean, there has been discussion about possibly keeping the gym, you know, whether like the town would want to use it, or, you know. And he wants direction from us, whether he should plan to not have, to not retain this, or whether he should be planning to retain. He says he needs to know one way or the other, based on how he plans it, because you might have some access roads coming in here, depending on whether that's there or not. So he would like to have some direction from us on the twentieth, about whether he should plan with that being there or not being there.
The other, the other part of that, just not to interrupt, but the other part that we were discussing is, if we leave it, we may not be able to get a full-size soccer field on there, which is kind of ideal for that space over there. And if we leave it, it may hinder that, or we'd have to shrink it. Plus, to get to it, you'd have, there wouldn't be any roadways going to it. It'd have to go over the grass, or whatever, to get to it.
So, we're all meeting with Ron on the eighth, so this Friday, we have another meeting of the committee. And so, I mean, there's a lot of decisions that are going to be, in fact, as of the eighth, we'll start meeting as a committee every week, because there are going to be decisions and guidance that he needs in order to move further. If they're major decisions, of course, we'll bring them back to the board, but if they're operational decisions, we'll just keep him moving, because we don't want to hold up the process, because it's a pretty intense process. We did get the transportation study back, so that, so again, when the budget passes, that'll allow him then to go forward with an engineering study, which I've reached out to the town of Durham already, Al, in terms of sitting with the planning people, sitting with the transportation people, sitting with the safety people. And I suggested to Todd that that would be one meeting, instead of us, you know, going from office to office to bring them all together and have a common conversation.
So, the transportation study is, I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead. No, that's fine.
You're going to be looking at that on the eighth with the committee? Or, the transportation study, you already have that back?
Yes, we just got it, and we'll be reviewing it Friday.
Will we see it for the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Everything we get, you'll get.
Okay. So, so my question is about the oval part that's over, like that front part? So, no, 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 the green, like the ghost, and there's like an oval over it. So, what is that oval over it representing?
It's just, what he's just trying to show is that, you know, there's, there's field space and parking space that's going to occupy this. He's not defining it as...
As anything in particular?
This is really, again, I kind of describe these kinds of drawings as back of the napkin, but they look real fancy. You know, it's, it's really just to show you, this is what he's thinking about where the building would be. The building would not necessarily look like, you know, that shape. This is where he thinks, you know, there's got to be field, this is where he thinks there's got to be parking. But in the end, when he moves down the path of time, by the time we hit May, this stuff will start taking on real definition.
So, I have one more question. Is there, I know at one point, there was some talk about possibly saving the oldest...
Yeah, we gave, we gave up on that one. Again, it's an issue of money, you know, because even though the oldest piece seems like a really good idea to hang on to it, because it's historic, the infrastructure for that piece is not, is not state-of-the-art. It's, and the other piece is that once we hang on to it, then it's the ADA stuff again. It's how much money do we have to put in it to make it compliant, require elevators and changes in stairwells and so forth and so on? So, that one priced itself out relatively quickly. And this one really is the hot topic issue that we need guidance from the board on at the next meeting.
And maybe just to point out the obvious, that this building's going to go up. This is like, it's planning, you know, in terms of efficiency, in terms of use of the space, that this will probably occupy the equivalent of one and a half football fields versus three of the current building, so that it opens up. And I think, even going back to Steve Blatt, when he presented it, you know, it'll be really surprising how much space you have, once you're not using this big footprint for the, for the building.
Right.
So, just in terms of like efficiency of space, efficiency of energy, you know, you're not traveling these huge distances, you know, you're not building these long corridors, using up space. So, I think that's a really important feature of this. It's going to go up.
I know they've discussed the geothermal plan in the past, but I don't remember, did they discuss whether they intend to use, or like what standard for a large building? Is it, is it the closed-loop system that gets buried under ground and zigzagged around the whole lot?
It's buried, the pumps are buried in the ground.
So, it's a series...
The wells, the wells are buried in the ground.
Well, that's what I'm, there's a difference between the vertical open systems, well, they can be closed too, but is it a vertical well?
That's a great question for Ron when he comes in, because you're going right past my comfort zone by a mile.
Because that's a factor in the small, relatively small lot size.
Great, great question.
That's one of the things he brought up, was where the geothermal would go. And he hasn't gotten to that point yet, but he did make some suggestions on where they probably would go. But again, I don't want to...
And did he talk about large area, or did he talk about drilling wells?
Drilling wells.
Okay. That, I think that answers the question.
And it would all be below grade. Everything would be, you wouldn't see anything on top.
Yeah, I mean, the conversations to date are really conceptations, Dan. And so, I mean, he knows what he wants to do, he just doesn't know where it's going to land yet in terms of the property.
So, in this drawing, just for reference, roughly how big is that field rectangle compared to what's the field space at the middle school today?
So, it would be bigger, because our goal, Michael, is to try to get a soccer-sized field on this property, and have it be the same type of field that we have at the high school, so that we can get maximum flexibility and use out of it. And the soccer size, as I am told by people who know, like Andy, is as big a field as we need in order to do other sports. So, so we're trying to maximize that size in order to have maximum flexibility.
Yeah. In terms of, so you're asking for a decision next time on the existing gym. What does the existing gym have for its own utilities? Or do we have a sense of if there's a whole bunch of additional construction that would be required to salvage that part?
There is additional construction, because first of all, if you tear everything down, say, to this wall, then there has to be a new wall that's built to retain this, this part of the building. Some parts, some parts of the building have water, like your bathrooms and locker rooms are here. This has rooftop heating. This section would need to be modified to be able to be heated, so whether you'd put, take one of the boilers that's back here in the boiler room and create a mini boiler room here. So there's, there's some money that would have to be invested. Andre Bowen is giving us a ballpark figure for that. And, you know, my sense is, and if, if the town of Durham wanted this section of the building to remain, and you all were willing to allow it to remain, then all the costs associated with that would have to shift to the town of Durham, because we're not budgeting to retain that section of the, of the building.
Last question.
Did you hear that?
For, for, for next time, when, when Ron is here, I know that this is, the outline that's there of the, of the building is a concept, but in terms of just general assumptions and attributes about it, it'd be helpful to know kind of what he's thinking in terms of academic square footage, key, you know, size of, size of auditorium, gym, cafeteria space that's, that's assumed in there.
Okay. Add that to the page.
Yeah, just kind of the gross parameters.
Yep, gross, gross numbers.
Yeah.
To classroom space, auditorium space.
Gym, cafeteria.
Gym, cafeteria.
And if we're making the list, probably the library as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Michael. Okay. Yep. Thank you, Tom. You make a great man.
Thanks. I will.
And I think, yeah, that completes my report, Tom.
How about the emergency responders?
Oh, yeah, that wasn't on my list. I wrote it down. Yeah, I've had a conversation with the Durham Police Chief about contracting with the gentleman from Exeter to host the meeting. I will have to make a personal call to Lee and Madbury, because I've not had any conversation with them. They've not responded to the letter, so I'll follow up.
Do we think it's sufficient to be working with the police chiefs, or do we want to expand the net a little bit and address the select boards or, or other folks?
Well, the letter went to the select boards and went to the council. So they're aware of it. I think that at this point, I just need to make the personal touch. Sorry, that's taking so long.
So, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Budget update, Sue.
So you have the most recent budget update for this year's budget, as of January 31st. We're in good shape. I know we talked about end-of-year fund balance. The bulk of that we're looking at right now is in teacher salaries. We have a big fund balance there. I compare this, I didn't do this at the same time last year, but close to that. And in March, we're ahead of that already this year, so we're looking pretty good, I think, in terms of this year's budget and fund balance. The negative number there, you see under...
I'm having trouble hearing you, Sue.
Oh, you are? Sorry. The negative number under secretaries was the position that we added for Andy. So that would come out of some of those salaries, but other than that, the budget is looking good at this point. Questions?
Subs look like they're really low. Is that just we've had not many sick days this year?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I do know that I think we have at least five or six maternity leaves coming up, so, yeah. And it is really in a good place right now, but I know that's coming up.
So, that's a good segue into sharing with the board the impact of the bus driver incentive, and how many bus drivers?
I don't remember that number. I apologize.
I do.
You do? Okay, so.
Sixteen, sixteen drivers received the full incentive of $500, which meant that they could not have missed more than two days. So, the incentive for the bus drivers has been terrifically successful.
Wow, that's good. We still are in need of two more drivers, so. Anyone out there looking to drive a bus? Any other questions on the budget? Do we want to do the scholarship?
You're right, yeah.
Engineering scholarship. So, the format for accepting scholarships is that the board needs to approve them and sign off on them. I think you have that form in front of you. This is for a engineering scholarship. To date, we have, I believe, about $1,200 in donations for that scholarship. We anticipate that this will be a yearly scholarship, and we just need your approval to accept that.
I had a question about this. Is the Rotary Club going to donate $1,000 every year? I was just curious how this is going to perpetuate.
I don't know that.
Unless there's some urgency that we have to approve it tonight, because otherwise, I don't see how this is kind of a continuing scholarship.
Well, I think all of our scholarships, for the most part, that I'm aware of, get yearly donations. A number of them are set up that way.
Yeah.
But in order to award them according to the rules and regulations, we need to accept them officially as a board. You need to accept them. I know, prior to my arrival, they had to go through a large, a big process to get all of their scholarships in line with the rules and regulations for the trustee. And this is one of the, one of the requirements, is that you approve them. There is already, I believe, a scholarship for nursing for the Murdoch family.
Yes.
And that, that gets donations every year, too.
Okay.
So, it's the similar, it's set up in a similar format.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the creation of the Joseph B. Murdoch Memorial Engineering Scholarship.
Goodbye, Denise. Is there a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Al. Mr. Murdock worked with Joe Murdoch. He was a real force at the university, and certainly a force in the community. And I think he was on the school board as well, so. Can we vote on this? On favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the scholarship is approved.
So, while we're continuing, Tom, this one requires signatures, so. Oh, well, it looks the same.
Does that seem wrong?
No, I don't think so. Do you want to look at it? Make sure it's... And then Denise signs it, and then...
Okay.
Yep. Dan, when you get it, can you walk it over to Brian?
You bet.
So, ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to give you an update on the representative assembly. In the morning, you had presentations from the school board of the year, where it was clear they were dealing with a lot of the same things. We were competency-based education in particular. And represent, another school board, I think it was Merrimack, I could have that wrong, presented on social-emotional learning. And that also felt very similar to what we were dealing with in terms of the three tiers system that they were, they were implementing. And that seemed very consistent with, you know... seemed very consistent with, you know, what Ron and talking, you know, presented to us, and we've been dealing with really for the past two or three years. In the afternoon, we came to the resolutions, ours lost, ours lost by a vote of 23 to 34. The board of the School Boards Association did not endorse it. The reasons that they gave were that if you had individual districts set policies, you'd get this kind of smorgasbord, or, you know, checkerboard of this district approves, this district doesn't approve, but they didn't come forward with like a uniform policy, you know, like the state policy, they came forward with, I think, a very general statement about school violence. So my sense was that, basically, they didn't want to get into the issue of guns, because it's a volatile issue, and so it was voted down, very vigorous discussion, but I think the fact that, the, my sense was that the body did not want to go against the board. The board is, you know, very, you know, has real confidence, and for good reason, you know, people have confidence in the board, confidence in Barrett-Cristina, and for them to come against our resolution. But if you take away the board itself, which is unanimously against it, the body was pretty evenly split. So of the hour and a half of discussion, about an hour and 15 minutes was about our resolution.
Yeah.
Very, very contentious. So, question is, what do we do from here? There is a, let's see if I can find it, a House Bill 564, which is being sponsored by Mary Heath, who's firmly, I think, the Associate Director, Associate Commissioner of Education, she's a really powerful force, and I've been in contact with her just to see what we could do in terms of, in terms of supporting House Bill 564. With the Democratic legislature, you know, there might be a possibility of getting that passed, but I don't, like a gazillion bills on education are going through right now, and so I'm going to try to make contact with her, and make contact with the head of the Education Committee, just to see kind of what the status are, statuses, and then possibly talk to other school board members who might support it. I know Raymond supported it, I know Keen supported it, you know, if we could bring together some people to talk in favor of this resolution. What her bill would do is essentially put the state in consistency with the gun-free school zone, okay, so it's not like a district-by-district thing, it's, it would put, which I, which I think would be fine, you know. So, so I don't know if I need, you know, a motion, but I'd like to continue to push, you know, this issue, and possibly writing editorials, drawing on the opinion by Gordon Graham, that I think you all have in your backup material, but I just don't think we should let this drop, you know. School Boards Association isn't going to be an advocate for it, but I think there'd be other people who could be advocates for it.
Nor was the Commissioner of Education.
No.
From New Hampshire, he was not an advocate either. It was really disheartening. He said, basically, that it's up to the legislature to do something, so I think we should definitely look to the legislature to try to do something.
I agree, I mean, it's a, it's a major liability issue for us, it's a deep concern. We want to continue having the community use the school as a polling place, so.
Is it true that it's against state law to smoke in public school?
To what?
To smoke.
Smoke?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's against the state law to smoke in a public school, but not to carry a firearm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Denise?
I wouldn't be at the point where I feel comfortable, like, writing an editorial, you know, writing an editorial perhaps at this, I mean, I'm totally in favor of reaching out to other school, school boards, and kind of talking about, you know, how we could support, but, you know.
If I could, I mean, I could write it as an individual.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but I mean, as, in terms of the board, I think we kind of have to, you know, just, I'm not sure I'm at that point, but yeah, totally as an individual, I would not have an issue.
Well, I'd like to rally the other districts around us, and then put some pressure on the legislature, because, again, I feel like we're, we're not even in the ballgame here when we're talking about this, it's, I mean, it's just not even in the discussion, so I think whatever we can do to lead the discussion and lead the legislature to go down this path, we should do it.
And, you know, you read in Gordon Graham's position, it's so ambiguous, because, and I like Dr. Morse's view, because I think he says, basically, on a case-by-case basis, the superintendent can use his authority to determine an unsafe situation and then act upon that, but it would seem to me that you would be in much firmer territory if you had a law that says, just don't bring it in, you know, not, so you didn't have to say, okay, in this case, it's dangerous, in that case, it's dangerous, not dangerous to bring it into polling place, but it's dangerous to bring it into a class, you know, it seems to me that's like a pretty precarious situation to be in.
Could be very precarious.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Like crazy, just, you know.
So I'll keep you informed on this, but I'd like to keep advocating, and if I do write something, I'll write it as, write it as an individual.
Or, I mean, if you are going to write something, why don't you bring it back, and then we can approve it?
Yes, that, I'd be more comfortable with that.
And say that, I mean, because I would prefer that you had the full weight of the board behind the thing that you write.
And I think if I write something that'd be pretty similar, maybe play out the resolution, because, you know, I've communicated with Gordon Graham, if he's comfortable with us really going forward, you know, drawing on his legal opinion, and nobody, nobody in the Assembly disagreed, none of the lawyers for the School Boards Association disagreed with, you know, the interpretation of the law, you know, with Gordon's statements, so that's, I think we're in solid ground, solid ground there, so, so I think it would be pretty much articulating just the precariousness of that, and I think something that Al mentioned earlier, it's like, you're spending all of this money to harden the entranceways, you know, and then you have laws that make it very unclear, if not permissive, that guns could go through those entranceways, you know, I mean, I don't get that, you know.
What I didn't get is that, that idea that, that laws don't stop people from bringing guns into the school, therefore, why have the laws? It was madness, truly madness.
Essentially what this issue said, yeah. And it may be that a law doesn't stop everything, a law doesn't stop everybody from speeding, you know, even 95, you know, but you not want to have the law.
Right.
You know, the law restrains, the law makes a statement about the state of affairs you want, the state of affairs you think are safe, and I think it has importance there. And then I think if you post something in front of schools and say, this is a gun-free school zone, you know, entrance is violation of this law, that at least creates some kind of awareness, if you take a gun in there, you're doing something that's against the law, you know, does it stop everybody? No, but it's, no.
And the other thing I said to the commissioner is that I would like to get, to diffuse this myth that somebody bringing a gun into the school is suddenly going to become like John Wayne and save the day, that is wrong. The idea of bringing a firearm into a densely populated area under a highly stressful situation without adequate training is a recipe for disaster.
Yep, I agree with that.
I'll continue to keep you informed as to what status of that law is and anything, and if I do write something, I will bring it in, and then we can, we can. Maybe one other, one other issue that came up, I don't know if Dr. Morse, you've had to deal with this, is there was, Litchfield had a motion, apparently there was like, an issue with educational hardships, where two school districts had kind of agreed on a, on a kind of a situation, and that they were overruled by the State Board of Education.
Wow, that's a relatively new phenomenon, where the State Board has assumed authority that nobody believes they actually have, and so, yeah, we haven't experienced it here, but it has happened to other school systems, and it's never happened before. Normally, the state adheres to local board decisions, it's never assumed a response, a power position that it can overrule local school boards, so this is new.
Could you, could you explain a little bit more what this is referring to?
If you think about what we just did with a student related into, with Portsmouth.
Oh, okay, okay.
And say, we, one of the school systems said no.
Okay.
Then the State Board and the commissioner have taken it upon themselves to say to Portsmouth, in this case, that's the example, you have to say yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and, you know, the objection to that is, you know, two school boards doing it together, doing it in a transparent fashion, and recognize, you know, what they're doing. The State Board doesn't pay taxes in Lee, Durham, and Madbury or Portsmouth, so what right should it have to tell the taxpayers in these three communities, elected representatives of school boards of each, that they have to do what the state says? It's new territory, hasn't been, hasn't been, happened, it just hasn't happened before, so it's a pretty, from our perspective, it's a pretty egregious use of power.
So the resolution was that if, if they, you know, if they countermanded the local decisions, that the state should have to pay for the, but I'm sure that's going to happen.
Yeah.
I think that was, that was the issue that was dealt with there. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the, at least we've already done the scholarship, motion to approve the maternity leave.
Yeah, so this, so this is one of our young teachers who's going to be having a baby, and the baby's due in June, and she approached Catherine and Suzanne and myself about taking a year's leave of absence, which we've certainly granted to others in the past, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for her to go from June to June, so she planted the seed with us that maybe it would be, you know, June to the fall of the 2021 school year. That makes more sense to me in terms of Catherine and Suzanne and Misty being able to replace her for an academic year, to have somebody leave in June and come back in June, really is just very awkward. So my recommendation is to support the request with a return in the fall of the 2021 school year.
Yep.
Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the maternity leave as presented.
Moved by Denise, is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan. Question? All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the maternity leave is approved.
Thank you.
School committee updates? I filled in for Kenny, and Al and I did the manifest. Other committees?
I have one, Orchard Drive, we met on Monday, so there were two legislative body things that had to be done. The school board said that we would set the price at $150,000 and sell the property, and if they came up with it, we'd sell it to them, and the town of Durham had to also say that we would accept the property, so that was the second part, so we did that Monday night. At the, at the meeting that we had, Dennis has really begun to look at places that give grant proposals, they're beginning to put together the actual proposal and the grants. Ellen Snyder, who's absolutely amazing, has already begun to, like, along with people from the Conservation Commission, look at the trail network that goes from our Orchard Drive property out to East and West Foss Farm, over Fish and Game property out to Doe Farm. So Ellen was meeting this week with both the university and with Fish and Game, try to work out what that would be, it's, if it came to fruition, it would be really an amazing project, so. Since we have permission from both bodies, it kind of allowed them to begin to develop the proposal itself to try to get grant money.
Good, sounds like progress.
It was progress.
Other committee? Public comments? I don't think we have a public here. So closing actions, we have the candidates' night, regular meetings coming up, and voting on the 12th.
Right, oh, I do have one comment, so, so the next meeting being the last, no, there's two meetings before, we have two more meetings before election, so I was just thinking about our student senator and when her last meeting-
Suzanne, when do you run elections for, for the board?
The same day as the Washington Senate.
12th, yeah, okay.
I just want to make sure that we-
Have time to say goodbye.
Recognize, yeah.
And are we in-
Next, we meet the 20th, right?
We meet on the 20th, yeah.
So the 20th would be-
Oh, yeah, the 20, and the-
It's not going to be in here.
But?
It's not going to be in here, according to this.
20th.
It's going to be in the conference room of the office, according to this. C120.
Oh, why is that?
On the 20th.
It's got to be a typo.
Regular meeting?
Sure.
On the 20th, it says we're going to be in C120.
Oh, that's going to be a typo.
Yeah.
Wow, so I was thinking, March?
That was, yeah, that's a typo.
May have one March fix, so we actually can meet.
Still tight in there.
Yeah, it would be.
Library?
Yeah, library.
Okay.
So March 20th would be the first meeting of the new rep, then, right? Okay, so Patty's last meeting would be the 6th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into non-public session?
No, is it non-public or non-meeting? Oh, no, it's-
What are we going in for?
Your evaluation.
Oh, my evaluation, that's on-
Okay.
That'd be a non-public, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's right in your folder. Open up your blue folder, Al, and get the right-
Kenny usually does this, I know.
Somebody else have it here? There we go, Al has it.
Do you have it, Denise?
Oh, I thought you had it, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought he has it.
Which one is it?
Is it that one? Yeah, it's RSA 91A3, number one.
Okay.
The one?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and make that, I'll make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91 dash A colon 3, number 1, for, it says dismissal, dismissal, promotion, compensation, disciplining of any public employee.
I thought it would be number 3, right?
Oh, number 3.
Number 3.
Really number 3, right?
Which is actually C.
Oh, jeez.
That's why we have Kenny.
So we have Kenny, he's got this down pat.
What's number C, Michael?
Number C.
We have C, we have-
Matters which discuss in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself.
Yes, okay, great.
Got it.
So is that the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll make that motion, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, roll call?
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Hey, Tom.